Okay, we're gonna call the order of the regular meeting for the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission. First item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise and Vice Chair to please lead us off.
(inaudible)
Next is Communications from Citizens. Oh, nope, I jumped too far down. Roll call.
Mayor Anderson?
Yep.
Vice Chair Bloomfield.
Here.
Cabinet?
Here.
Greg Froelich?
Here.
Brian Johns?
Les Smith?
Here.
Philip Allegrandi is absent and James Torgerson.
Thank you.
You have a quorum chair.
Next is Approval of Agenda. It's been suggested we take Items 21 and 22, which is Gilbert Recycling Center. They've been requested to be tabled. We'll move that to Consent. Rest of the agenda would stay as is. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Thank you Chairman. There's been a conflict declared on Item Number Nine, so we'll have two votes.
Further record?
Sorry, oh yes, I'm so sorry. Yes, I moved to approve the agenda.
Motion for approval is very second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cabinet, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Approval, agenda is approved. Next will be Communications from Citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdictions of the town, but not on the agenda. Commission responses limit to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is anyone from the public wish to address the Commission at this time?
Chairman Anderson, we need to address Number Nine. For the, oh, Number Seven. Right. Yes, you have to vote on Number Nine separately?
Yeah, we'll do that when we get to that point.
And who declared the conflict, just so I?
I was gonna declare the conflict with Nine. I jumped ahead, I apologize.
Okay. So, nobody from the public, we're good there? Okay, thank you. Next will be Report from Council Liaison. Councilmember Peterson.
Chairman, thank you. Bridgette Peterson from the Gilbert Town Council, serving as your liaison still. Lucky me, I love the Planning Commission, you all know that. We just have a couple of items to share with you. Gilbert's partnering with Maricopa Association of Governments this summer to participate in the Heat Relief Network. And from now until September 2nd, we are collecting water bottles, sunscreen hats, and other items that can be donated to many different locations within our town, Southeast Regional Library, Free Stone Recreation Center, and all of our fire stations, for example. If you'd like more information of that, please visit gilbertaz.gov/communityresources. I'd also like to ask everybody if they have elderly family members or neighbors to please check on them over the summer, because those folks tend to shut their ACs down because of the cost. And we have many heat-related deaths because of that here in the valley, and I would hate to see that happen in Gilbert. And just a reminder to watch your kids around water. Don't leave your kids or pets in hot cars, and watch your dog's feet on the hot ground. I know we're all talking about buying those little booties for our dogs, so that they can take walks this summer. Tomorrow, June 6th, is the last day for students from 9th to 12th grades, 14 to 18 years old, that live in Gilbert or attend a school in Gilbert, to sign up to be part of the 2019-2020 Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. It is an excellent program for any teen that wants to be involved, or even learn about their government, or get some volunteer hours. It runs pretty much the whole school year, and they just get so much out of it, and they get to have input on issues going on within the community. And if anybody would like information about that, they can visit gilbertaz.gov/MyAC. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Councilmember Peterson. Next will be Public Hearing Consent Items. All items listed below are considered the Public Hearing Consent Calendar. The Commission may, by a single motion, approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the Commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for a purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Following items will be voted on. Item 9, DR 19-16 Lakes at Anasie, Parcel 3. Parcel 3. Item 10, DR 19-46 Maserati Alpha Romero, that has been requested to be continued to the July 10, 2019, public hearing. UP 19-19 Beehive Homes of Gilbert. DR 19-41 New Horizon Women's Care. Item 13, DR 19-26 BJ Baseline. Item 14, S19-01 Val Vista and Pecos. Item 15, DR 19-14 Val Vista and Pecos. Item 21, UP 18-25 Gilbert Recycling Center to be tabled. Item 22, DR 18-163 Gilbert Recycling Center to be tabled. Does anybody have any conflicts with the agenda as read?
As declared before, conflict with Item 9.
Okay, thank you. Right now, so now we are open and closed to public hearing. Vice Chair, can I have you entertain a motion, please?
Certainly. Chairman, I move to, I move to approve the consented item Number 9, as written.
Motion for approval is very second.
Second.
Commissioner Cabinet with the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Approved. Vice Chair?
Now with the full Commission voting, I move to approve the remaining items of the consented items, Number 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 20, and 22, or 21 and 22.
Okay. Motion for approval is very second.
Second.
Commissioner Froelich with the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Approved. Now, we will move along to Public Hearing Non Consent Items. Non consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the Commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment is void of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form out at the back of the room, indicating the number, item number on which you wish to be heard, and please bring it up front to the front table. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the Commission. First item we'll hear will be Item 16, DR 14-21, 29C, Agratopia Center. Ashley, please.
Thank you Chairman Anderson and Commission members. Really excited about this project, DR 14-29C and DR 19-13. This is Agratopia Epicenter. This project is located at the northwest corner of Higley and Ray Roads. Some of the Commission may recall that this project was originally planned for and approved back in 2014, and so we're essentially looking at some minor tweaks to the site plan and revised elevations as this, as the developer looks to develop this piece of property. It is part of the Agratopia PAD, and as such, they have some additional PAD requirements and modifications to their development standards. The property is located in the general commercial zoning district, which allows loft above in a multi-use building. This property is 21.8 acres, again, zone general commercial. The applicant in this case is proposing 49,000 square feet of ground floor retail with 320 loft-style units above. The maximum height allowed in the zoning district is 60 feet 6 inches, which the applicant is taking advantage of. In terms of parking, they are well within the required amount of parking, providing 955 spaces, broken up for both the retail and residential uses. Looking at the site plan, this is substantially similar to what was approved back in 2014. It's a little bit difficult to see the, to see the building, but the building's located in this, in these locations here, if you can follow my mouse around. Residential parking, back here to the rear for those residential units, a number of access points along both Higley Road and Ray Road, some of those being full motion, signalized intersections, as well as some ride-in, ride-out, turning movements. The signal will be, a signal will be installed as part of this project in this location. And then I will also point out, this ride-in, ride-out access is shared with the backyard taco. This leads to the gated portion of the development that, that would provide parking for the residential units here. Towards the front of the site and wrapping around the building would be kind of some flex parking for both the residential guest spaces, as well as the retail on the ground And what I really wanted to focus on tonight, the Planning Commission saw this back in March as a study session item, and so I really just want to focus on what we heard from the Planning Commission at the study session and how those items have been addressed. I do have all of the elevations in my presentation, I'll run through them pretty quickly, so if there's anything that the Commission would like me to spend a little bit more time on, let me know, but I'm just gonna focus on the comments, I think initially. What we heard at the study session was that there were some very long, unarticulated roof lines. Staff had provided the suggestion to potentially add some dormers to break up those roof lines. The applicant has modified their design by varying the roof lines, they've reduced the pitch to meet the building heights, and added dormers. Staff is seeking additional feedback on the dormers. We're not sure that they actually add to the development, and so if the Commission is of that same opinion, feel free to have those removed. We also heard from the Commission at study session that the balconies weren't well-integrated into the development. And with that, the applicant has provided a number of modifications. They've varied how those balconies have been handled. There are some pop-outs that have been added to provide a little bit of privacy between those balconies. Some have now been recessed, and they just look a little bit different, so that it doesn't have that hotel feel that I think we were, we were all observing last time. Previously, the roof-mounted mechanical equipment wasn't well-integrated, so they've integrated some mechanical wells within the pitched roof portion, and then the remainder are hidden by the parapet wall. We also heard some feedback on their use of asphalt shingles. The design guidelines suggest that predominant building materials should not include asphalt shingles, except for period architecture, so the applicant has continued to propose the asphalt shingles, and we'll leave that up to the Commission if you'd like to see some modifications to that or not. In terms of the elevations, if you can, if you can see up here in the right-hand corner is a, is a graphic that kind of shows where we're looking at the building, so we're starting here in the southwest portion of the building, and be working our way around. I'll point out some of the modifications that they've made. As I mentioned, they've improved the layout of the balconies, they've increased the size of the balconies to meet the minimum standard for our multifamily product. On this elevation here, you can see some recessed balconies, and here it's a little difficult to tell that pop-out that I mentioned, that provides a little bit of privacy, if you're using your balcony from looking out onto the adjacent. And then moving towards the corner of Ray and Higley, here's another elevation, again, we see those same recessed balconies, some separation between the two to provide a little bit more privacy. This is looking at the rear of the building, and the rear they've gone with a little bit more subtle changes in terms of color, so the front, they've utilized some brick and some alternate colors, and then the rear of the building is a little bit more neutral as we move around to that portion. The, the brick is utilized well in this development as well, and then on this bottom portion here, you can see those dormers that I talked about, that, that I don't know that they add a lot to the development proportionally, maybe they're a little bit off. So, as I mentioned, some Commission feedback on that, and if you'd like the applicant to go ahead and remove those, I think staff would be comfortable with that. Going again through these, we're seeing a lot of the same architecture. This is the interior courtyard to that amenity space. These again are interior to the development. And then this is we approach what would be visible from Higley Road. The applicant has some, a nice massing tower here with a spire, so they've really, they've really made a number of changes that have, have really improved the design of this. Some minor tweaks, things like removing the vertical, or the horizontal siding that was throughout a lot of the building, now they've used it much more efficiently as just an accent feature to modernize the building a little bit. The applicant also provided some rendering, so we can see a little bit of the movement within the building a little bit better, because there is, there is quite a lot of movement throughout this building, just in the form of it, as well as pop-outs and recesses. It's also important to note that this project is subject to the Agratopia Design Guidelines, which includes a tenant expression zone on that bottom floor, so they've, they've rendered out how that might develop to allow for some commercial development, to activate that commercial space. But, but those items will come through at a later date when those residential spaces start to develop. In terms of colors and materials, this is a very similar palette to what we saw at the study session. Staff does recommend approval of this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you Ashley. Does anybody have any comments or questions at this time? Commissioner Froelich?
As far as the asphalt shingles, are there any in the area that you have this within Agratopia or somewhere else in the town?
You know, I might defer to the applicant on whether or not they're used within Agratopia. I didn't look into that, and I can't think of any projects off of the top of my head that have allowed asphalt shingles. I believe in Morrison Ranch, there was an assisted living facility that, that had similar kind of period architecture that we did allow it on.
Do you know what the town's concern is of using asphalt shingles?
Well, within our design guidelines, it talks about high-quality materials. In this instance, I think that, you know, at such a tall height, it's not going to be quite as visible as if it was a smaller building perhaps, so I think that that, that helps our comfort level on allowing them in this instance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, anyone else? Commissioner Cabinet?
So, Ash, yeah, I hadn't noticed this before. I'm fine with the building, you know, and I kinda tend to agree on the dormers, they don't really, in fact, if you hadn't pointed them out, I would've missed them. They're that, they're that small and inconsequential, so I'm okay if those go away. Interested to see what everybody else says, but also, jumping out at me, which hadn't before, is the parking bay in the northwest area of the site. I see they're trying to get additional counts, which is great to provide all this parking, given the mixed-use component here, which I love, but I'm looking at how that integrates into the existing residential, and I'm, I'm just seeing a parking lot in people's front yards. I'm just a little, little surprised, it's just, it's that stark, as I look at the larger plan that shows residential just to the northwest of those, the last, oh, what's the street I don't see the street name, but it's the northwest edge there. I just, I see, I see homes right there, and is there, there's no wall or any kind of buffer, or?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Cabinet, are you referring to this portion here?
I am.
There, so there is the, the screen wall, it's, it's hard to see the label on this, and it may actually be on the landscape plans, but there, it's the picket fence that we, that we see with Agratopia that runs along this portion. There's also considerable landscaping. This is, this is consistent with where parking was, was provided and laid out in the original approval in 2014. This was all included in that.
Okay, so there's a, there's a landscape buffer, which, I just, I don't think I have a landscape plan, do I?
There should be one, and I've got, I can scroll to one here.
Let me dig real quick, hang on. I missed it, if it's there, sorry. Oh, there, I found it, I found it, okay. All right, and you're saying there's a wall in there too?
Correct.
Okay, and how high is that wall, do you know?
I don't.
Okay.
But I can, I can certainly look while the applicant gives his presentation, if he doesn't know the answer right off the top of the head, too.
Okay, I see the 15-foot setback, okay. Okay, this, I had not seen this before, I apologize, but that, yeah, that's, that softens it a little bit at least, so that's good. All right, otherwise, I really, I like the project, I think it's a really, it'll be a nice addition to that corner, very, very well laid out. I love the way they laid the buildings out on the site and how they'll be prominent to the corner, and, and it's really nice to see that ground-level commercial integrate with that, that residential above. I'm excited to see this come together, so, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else? Commissioner Froelich?
All right, I have another question now. On the, it appears that that signal, I'm assuming that's aligned with the current driveway into Joe's Farm Girl, is that correct?
The signal will align with this road here that you can see to the south.
Okay. And then it looks like, so it's that road, okay. And then on the south side, they will be constructing, it looks like sidewalk ramps for the, the signal for that crossing. Is that part of this project?
Are you, Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Froelich, are you referring to along, as part of the signal?
Yeah, it looks like they've got, on one of the drawings, it appears that they have sidewalk ramps on all four corners, so I was just, this is on Ray Road, at the signal. So, are those all part of this project, or are there existing sidewalk ramps?
Commissioner Froelich, there are existing sidewalks and ramps there. Any modifications that are needed for the entrance and for the signal will be done as part of this project.
Okay, in case, if they need to widen it to, to match the south side with the north side, they'll do that with this project?
That is correct, and they'll also be adding a bike lane along the frontage of this, as part of this project, so that curb line will be adjusted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, and in part, in one of your renderings, did we see a rooftop sign on one of the buildings?
You did. Let me, let me go to that. So, Agratopia is a unique development. When the PAD was adopted for this development, it created a special sign district, which outlined a number of unique signs that could exist within this development. Rooftop signs are a part of that sign district. In conjunction with that, when the applicant got their design guidelines for Agratopia approved in 2014, it included, or it solidified the standards of the sign district as part of that, and that is provided for reference in your packet. And so this project will still comply with all of those design guidelines that were previously adopted, which does allow for rooftop signs and a number of other unique sign types.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, thank you Ashley. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? If you could state your name, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Yes, my name is Joe Johnston, and I live at 2762 East James Street, in the beautiful town of Gilbert, and in the subdivision known as Agratopia. I'm a partner in the project, and I've been working on Agratopia since 1999, a year after we opened the barbecue. We have four generations living there, we love Agratopia, and this is like the capstone piece for the project. We've tried, as a part of the topia, part of the name Agratopia, to create kind of a, a community with village life and connectivity, where people are known and they're not anonymous, and where people of all ages and all stages can mix. And so, this capstone project allows people to have a little bit more of an urban vibe. It brings in the amount of commercial we have always planned since day one, to serve the town of Gilbert, to serve the residents, focusing on food and health, and best of Arizona, and also residential options that allow for people who don't want to own their own property, that want to have the simpler life of having it managed as, as an apartment. So, as mentioned, we started this project a long time ago, we were ready to pull permits, actually, 18 months ago, our partner decided that they wanted to bail out, but that had a silver lining. We were able to find a partner who was even more into architecture, design, quality, also was very comfortable with mixed use, called Streetlights Residential, and so that's been the silver lining. And I was going to turn it over to our partner at Streetlights Residential, after I just mentioned about the shingles, I know there was a question about the shingles, I was just gonna clarify. Part of the agro-commercial area, the Homesteaders House has shingles, and the entry monument, whoops, the entry monument for Agratopia has shingles as well, so it is a material that's used within the community from a historical perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Staff in Planning Commission, my name is Greg NATO with Streetlights Residential. We are the development partner with Joe Johnston and his team working on the project. I first want to thank Ashley and all town staff for really navigating and working alongside our team to confirm our design adhered to all of the town design criteria that was previously approved for the site. I also want to thank the Commission for your feedback in our March work session and subsequent follow-up meetings. As you can see in the design presented tonight, revisions were really influenced by your comments, and I think we've done a job, you know, and staff would agree that we've done a job, a solid job in addressing all of the Commission and staff comments with, with the recent middle. I understand it's a long agenda tonight, appreciate your time, so we do have a presentation, if you'd like us to run through that. Our project architect is here to do so, but I'll leave that up to you guys, and otherwise, we're here to answer any questions that you guys may have, or the community has.
I guess the first question will be, is how many minutes is your presentation?
We can keep it as short or long as you want, I'd say we could get through it in three or four minutes, but...
Let me check with the, do you guys feel like we need to see the presentation by the applicant, or have you guys seen enough from Ashley's presentation and what we reviewed in the packet? I think we're, I think we've seen enough from the, Ashley's presentation and what we've seen in the packet now, so if we do have any questions for the design architect or your team, we'll all bring you guys back up.
Absolutely, and just one final clarification, on the screening of the parking at the northwest corner of the site, we do not have a solid wall. There aren't any solid walls within Agratopia, so it is a live screen with a kind of double pipe rail fence that's consistent throughout the neighborhood and the existing retail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I do have a few cards here from the public. I have one person I would like to speak, Lisa Bullard. If you could please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
So, I'm Lisa Ballard, and I live in Gilbert, and I appreciate the men in suits and Joe, but I'm gonna fight against you tonight. I am a current resident of the Lions Gate Community, and I live right across the street from Agratopia. I am vehemently opposed to this... this design and the layout in the Agritopia Center being built for the following reasons. Number one, traffic and congestion. I would ask how many of you, the board or the men in suits, drive up and down Higley on a regular basis? Do you know how many current stoplights are on Higley Road at this time? From Way to, Ray to Warner Road, approximately one mile, there are currently six stoplights. Yes, six. I do not want more traffic, more congestion, and another stoplight added to Ray or to Higley. How many of you have actually driven from Ray to Warner when ALA is in session or when Williamsville High School is in session? Before school or after school? Let alone when there are events. By adding this complex, you're adding a huge eyesore, you're blocking views, and you're adding more traffic to this already congested area. There have already been multiple accidents in and around my neighborhood, and even a fatality just this past year. Number two, we do not need any more apartments in the area that I live in. Currently, you're wanting to add another 320 more apartments to my area. Why? On the southeast corner of Higley and Ray, there's an apartment complex. On Power and Ray, you are currently building a large apartment complex. Near Santan Village, the Boulevard, there are two huge complexes already, and from what I understand, the town has approved another apartment complex to be built next to the Santan Mall. There is also an epicenter of apartments being across, built across from the Santan Mall on Williamsville and Santan Parkway. This epicenter of apartments are not even finished yet, they're not even built, and they have not yet been filled with reticents. On Williamsville, in between Higley and Recker, there is also another large apartment, a large complex of apartments. On the corner of Higley and Warner, it is zoned for another apartment complex. On Recker, just north of Warner, there is a large apartment complex. So within a five-to-seven mile radius, you're telling me that we have over 10 large apartment complexes, and as a community member, do I want 320 more apartment complexes near my neighborhood? No. I moved from my old neighborhood just down the street because Gilbert decided to put two large apartment complexes near my home. I did not want to deal with the buildings. I did not want to deal with the traffic, nor do I want to deal with, as a community member, sometimes the type of culture that comes with those who rent. What is the guarantee to anyone in this neighborhood that it will fill out and that all of these apartment complexes will be full? My third point, shopping and business parks within Gilbert. At the Santan Mall, how many of you have actually walked the mall lately? Most, if not a lot, of the retail spaces in that mall are currently empty. Have you as board members driven around that area? Have you in suits driven around that area? Because at this time, there is so much traffic, and there's so much congestion. The Whole Foods building across the street has been empty and passed back and forth, and there are multiple spaces behind that that are currently for rent. The CBS building on Higley and Warner has been vacant for more than a year and has now been turned into a real estate building. There are shops on the corner of Higley and Warner and on the northeast and southeast corners that are already zoned for more shopping space. On Recker and Williamsville, you just talked about Cooley Station, that is up for more retail spaces and shops, that is literally within a few miles of what's going to go on Higley and Ray. Most of the newer retail spaces that are being built have empty spaces that still need to be filled, so why are we building more retail spaces and shops and restaurants when you can't even fill the ones that are already built or have been built, including in the Santan Mall? I grew up in Mesa. There is a reason why I moved to Gilbert, and when I look at Mesa and the apartment complexes, the downtown, and the type of complex that Mesa has turned into, I look at what's going to happen to Gilbert in the next five to 10 years. I moved to Gilbert from the community and the farm feel. I love Agritopia. I love the farm feel that Joe has created, but I am, again, vehemently opposed to what is being built there. I voted for a board commission whom I thought would be, and represent me in the best interests of Gilbert. I may be one person, but I am a community member in this town, and if, at this point, I would like to keep that open field that Gilbert, and that farm feel that Gilbert once had. I am asking that this Agritopia epicenter be reconsidered for this corner and this neighborhood. It does not belong on this area, whether it's a utopia or not. I am, again, looking at what this town already has, and why do I need another 320 apartments in my neighborhood? I do not want to see, when I drive out, a 60-foot building in my front yard. I want to see the Superstition Mountains. I would ask for your consideration to either remove this building completely or to redesign it so that it's as a one level that is similar to what is already built in that Agritopia neighborhood. Why not keep it at one level, and why not keep it at the retail shops that are already there? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Ballard.
I do have three more cards here. Matt, excuse, I'm sorry, I apologize if I mess up your last names. Matt Kichui is in favor of this project but does not wish to speak. Kent Xander is in favor of this project but does not wish to speak. And Glenn Gallatin is in favor of this item but does not check if they want to speak or not speak. Glenn, if you'd like to speak, this is your opportunity. You would like to speak? If you could just state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mark down if I wanted to speak or not. I just wanted to say that I lived in Gilbert. I live at 1173 East Jasper Drive at Warner and Lindsay, so just about two miles away. My wife and I have lived there for about, I must say, about 15 years now. I've known Agritopia as it's built, the whole Joe's Farm Girl community. He's done so much for this community. I'm a big supporter of, of him. It's just a great place. It's helped the community. I think it's helped with my property value. And as someone who's grown up as a kid in apartments, to see such beautiful apartments coming out, from the little bit that I understand and looking at the documents online, I understand these are going to be really premium, beautiful apartments. I think it's going to bring in a wonderful, wonderful people to our community. I'm a, I'm a big supporter of it. I'm excited for it. I think bringing in more business and more tax-based community is something that we need, and the, as, as I understand it, we're one of the fastest-growing towns in America. We're going to need more housing. We're going to need beautiful housing. I have, I, I drive those streets every day. I never had a problem with traffic. I'm, I'm happy that there's lights going to be put in, in that area. I think it's going to make exiting and entering that area actually a little bit safer. I happen to ride scooters for a living, and for me, it's, it's a big deal, and I, I, all I can say is, I want to support this. And again, bringing in more business to this town, especially close to where I live, is fantastic, and to have more opportunities for people. A lot of people don't want houses. They want apartments, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your time. At this time, would the applicant like to come back up and respond to what's been said? You'll have five minutes.
Adam Ball, on behalf of Epicenter Agritopia. I certainly understand the sentiments shared, particularly if they're not aware of the history that's happened in this area, but what we're proposing today is really something that's been in the works dating back a decade or more. The heights, the land uses, the traffic signals, those are all things outside of the purview of a designer review hearing. Those are items related to a zoning case that was established by the city council and by ordinance many, many years ago. So really what we're proposing is something in furtherance of that legislative action. And at the end of the day, the Streets Transportation Department determines which traffic signals are warranted and which are not. No, no developer wants to install them because it costs significant money, but it's at the discretion of the traffic engineer that we will be putting one in if they so decide. At the end of the day, this is consistent with the zoning that's allowed on the property, the heights that are allowed on the property, and the uses that have been long encouraged and approved on this property. This very constitution here with its mixed-use retail and residential living above has been in the works very, very long. In fact, probably longer than the William Lyons homes have been next door. That being said, I appreciate your consideration today.
All right, thank you. Do we have any further questions for staff? Commissioner Torgason?
I just wanted to be clear. This is a by-right use at that point because of the zoning, am I right? Getting a nod from Bridget, but a nod from you two and a nod. All right, so this is a by-right use. Really don't have anything to say as far as...
Yeah, and this is a DRK, so going by design guidelines, they fit within that zoning's design guidelines, correct, of the town? Okay. So I guess we can close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais. Is there any discussion? Vice Chair?
I had an opportunity after our last planning commission where we, where we had provided a lot of feedback and a lot of comments about the design review case, and so I appreciated the time that they spent to come and, and visit and, and educate me on what they had done and how they had updated and upgraded the project. And personally, I'm excited about it. I think it fits in well with Agritopia and the dream and the vision that's down there. It certainly meets the zoning requirements or zoning cases that have been approved on the property already. So all in all, I'm pleased with it. As far as, there was questions asked of us earlier, you know, are the shingles okay and the dormers needed? On a pedestrian scale of the size of this building, dormers won't ever be noticed, nor will the shingles. They might be noticed by somebody that's across the street, but nowhere in this project. So I, I'm not necessarily a fan of, of having the dormers on there. I think I'll leave that up to the discretion of the developer and the shingles I'm okay with, but I'm in favor of the project, so if, if we were to vote, I would vote that direction.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Cavani?
Well, one thing I'd point out, and I, I think this is, and I appreciate the sentiments. Thank you for bringing those sentiments up. We, we do want to hear everyone's feelings that are passionate about it, and we do appreciate that. I think one of the unique things that comes with this particular development, though, and we don't get this very much in Gilbert, because Gilbert isn't, in my view, perhaps, ready for this yet, but, but where it's done and it's done well, we're so lucky to have it, and that's mixed use. And to have this mixed-use opportunity, and, and for the applicant to go find a developer who is comfortable doing that, because that's the problem we have, is we can't find developers that have the willingness to do the mixed-use piece. It, it is a little more complex, a little bit more unique, and so harder to find that skill set, and they found somebody that's willing to do that. And I think, whereas in, in, the speaker mentioned a few sites nearby that are maybe shuttered right now, th- this is unique because it is mixed use, and I do appreciate that the applicant went through the trouble with their architect to address many of our concerns. Thank you. That, that's well received on this end to see that you've looked at those things and tried to address them. So really appreciate that. I think you've done a great job. I, too, am in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Furlough?
Yeah, thank you for the explanation on the, the shingles, that they are incorporated into Agritopia. I think that's, I'm fine with it, understanding that, especially at the height. I agree. When we're talking four or five-story buildings, I'm more comfortable with that. As far as the site layout, I, I think it's really good. We've, we've, where the buildings are closer to Higley, there's commercial on the other side of the road. I think we've tried to keep this separated from the communities and closer to the, the commercial areas, and I think the product that you came today with is, is much improved over what we saw last time. You did listen to the comments and incorporated those. I think it's a good product, so I would be in favor.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I would have to share the opinions of the rest of the commission. Very pleased with the direction that the applicant has gone with the design in this compared to what was originally designed. I think it's a tremendous improvement, and I'm going to go even further and say that I think it's a more improvement than what was previously approved back in 2014 or whatever year it was. So thank you very much for listening to our concerns and making those adjustments. greatly appreciate it. Regarding the dormers, so I'm originally from the East Coast, and I see dormers just stuck on roofs like that. It drives me nuts. Unless it's like a real dormer that's going to be used, it just, I, I don't see the purpose of it. So getting a good sense is that we're okay with deleting the dormers, so to make that legal for them to take them off, do we, should we include that as part of the approval? As like a kind of a stipulation? Okay, so I guess whoever's going to make the motion, if you can somehow word it into your approval, you want to do it? Okay, so, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do the motion.
Hey Chairman, I move to approve DR 14-29-C, parenthetically, DR 19-13 Agritopia epicenter, with clarification that the architectural dormers can be removed.
Second?
Second by Vice Chair. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. DR 14-29-C is approved. And for those of you that came out to speak on this case today, thank you very much for doing so. Next, we'll move along to item 17, DR 19-29. We'll just wait for these folks to get up first. Yeah, I think we're ready, Josh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Commissioners, this is Gilbert Gateway Commerce Center. This is a proposed industrial development located southwest of the southwest corner of Power and Warner Roads. It is directly east, or directly west, excuse me, of the current American Furniture Warehouse. It is located in Light Industrial with a PAD. Just to clarify, the PAD, the deviations and reflections within that PAD don't actually, they don't affect the Light Industrial site. It was a combined PAD with the American Furniture Warehouse, and all those stipulations only apply to the regional commercial zoning. This is, the applicant is proposing three Light Industrial, Light Manufacturing Warehouse buildings totaling approximately 420,000 square feet. As you can notice on the western boundary, there is residential on the opposite side of that. The applicant has provided a 90-foot retention basin to assist in buffering the residential from the industrial use, which is above and beyond what is required in our land development code. I also do want to point out that separation of the actual buildings themselves from that western property line equals about 150 feet. So the applicant has gone, in staff's opinion, above and beyond in, in helping buffer those residential uses to the, the west. This is a representation of the landscape plan. This just further illustrates what the applicant is planning, three separate buildings, the buffer on the western boundary. And just to look at the quick overview of the elevations, it's very modern, industrial. The applicant was aiming for more of an office-type look. The only changes in the elevations from when the last time the commission saw this, that study session, is the applicant switched up a couple of colors just to make them contrast better, at staff's insistence. This is just a, a rendering of what the potential development will look like. It's very nice, very modern, very clean-looking. So just to make it quick, staff recommends approval of DR 19-29, the Gilbert Gateway Commerce Center. If you have any questions, please let me know, and also the applicant is here to answer any more specific questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Somebody have any comments or questions for staff? Okay, I think we're good with you, Josh. If the applicant would like to come up and make a presentation, you'll have 10 minutes. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Ryan Norris with Tramwell Crowe, Staff and Planning Commission. Thanks for your time tonight, and Josh, thanks for the presentation. We're here today talking about Gilbert Gateway Commerce Center. We first came to Gilbert about five years ago with a project called Park Lucero, Light Industrial Project off of Gilbert in the 202. With our success that we had there, combined with the town of Gilbert, we started looking for a new site, started working with American Furniture Warehouse to buy the excess land that they had purchased for their retail facility on Power Road. So we're excited to find some industrial zone land. This week, we've been working with the neighbors, talking to them about particularly a separation fence per Town of Gilbert Code. It is a requirement to put a block wall fence separating residential from commercial uses on the property line, which is why we are currently showing that wall on the property line, but we have begun discussions with the neighborhood in order to appease some of the neighbors and, and maintain access to a portion of their residential areas, to, to push that back potentially 10 to 15 feet. And our hope is that that works well with the neighborhood, so we're, we're, we're working with them on that. Moving, moving from that wall, we have a 90-foot landscape setback. That's compared to the 25-foot minimum that we're required to do, so we're tripling- 25-foot minimum that we're required to do. So we're tripling that. And then, as Josh mentioned, we are 150 feet from property line before you get to building, the minimum being about half of that of 75 feet. Within that landscaping basin, on the western side of our property, we do have non-deciduous trees that are not going to, their leaves will not fall throughout the year, which will help screen our facility from the residential as well. Additionally, we have clustered some of those trees in front of the dock areas. It's not well shown here, but on the actual landscape plan, it is well identified that those tree areas are clustered around the open areas where you could potentially see into a truck court. So we think we've gone above and beyond there. And then the last thing I'll mention is, you know, with the majority of our traffic coming off of Power Road, they're going to enter the site from the east, and they're going to come down our eastern drive. So we think that we've designed the buildings as such to keep the majority of our traffic on the eastern half of our site, which should help with any issues related to the residents to the west. So thanks for your time, and any questions?
Okay, thank you. We're good. Thank you. I do have a few cards here. Brandon Ray would wish to speak? If you just state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Brandon Ray. I live in a house that is west of this, and my original concern was actually answered by the presentation. But it's that the 180th Street, which is a private road on the far west side of this property, it runs north-south. I wanted to make sure that commercial traffic was not traveling down there, down my private road. So that was it.
Okay, thank you. Next person that wishes to speak is Mark Lee. If you could state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes as well.
Yes, my name is Mark Lee. I live at 4404 East Caroline Lane. That is one of the homes, one of the five homes that meets up with that west end that they're talking about in the presentation. I first want to express my gratitude to the developers for the efforts that they put forth to expand the area there so that we have a greater buffer, their choice of trees, things of that nature. They really have gone above and beyond, and I personally am very grateful for that. The big concern that I have, which I know that they've been addressing, Ryan has spoken about, is the block fence that is required by the Gilbert zoning on the property line. If it were to remain as such, that could be a potential security risk, in my opinion. Plus, it does not provide adequate leeway for us to be able to maintain the ditch that runs north and south along that corridor there. So it has been proposed in our discussions that we extended, as Ryan said, you know, 10 to 15 feet beyond the property line, which would be greatly appreciated. In addition, eight foot for something like that, an industrial, light industrial area, seems to be a little bit low, especially again, even though there might be trees there, that it would be nice to be able to block some of that sound and to add additional security. And so it would really be nice if we could have that fence extended beyond eight feet, perhaps up to 10 feet or so. These are my basic concerns, and I do understand and believe that the developers are willing to work with us on that, which I am greatly appreciative of. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I do have one final card from Darren Alred. He didn't check if he wanted to speak or not. If you please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Darren Alred, we live at 4345 East Caroline Lane. Just to echo what Mark was saying is, right along here, this canal, open canal bank runs right along this bank, and we do need to have that, if that wall's pushed right up against that property line, it detours the access along that. So we want to be able to move that wall just a little bit further into the ground or further into the property and see if we can't also extend the height of that wall. You know, eight foot's kind of a standard wall, but if we could, I mean, these homes that sit around here, I'm a couple houses down the further right here, but this is what we're going to be looking at. And we'd like to have, be able to have a little bit higher wall blocking this, the view of the back of these buildings here. So that's, they have done a great job of creating a nice buffer along here, considering that it is a light industrial area. And so we're appreciative of that. But if we could at all extend the height of that wall a little bit and move the wall back in to make sure we can access that drainage ditch along there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant wish to come back up? And you'll have five minutes for any responses.
Thank you. Appreciate the comments from the neighbors. Like we said, we are working with them on, you know, the location of that wall and design of that wall. So that'll come through as, per Town of Gilbert standards, as the separation fence modification and will come through after this process. We have some time, I believe, to get that done. And the neighbors have been great, meeting with me over the past week. I don't foresee any issues getting that completed. So thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I think somebody had a question for you.
I do have a question for you.
Okay.
Because, because that buffer over there on the western side, it's your downstream side, it's also going to be where your retention basin is at. If you shift that property or that wall off the property line, is that going to impact you on your retention basin? Do you foresee there being a problem there?
So the first 25 feet are, is generally flat before the basin's starting.
So no problem there.
Yeah, I don't foresee an issue. I think we're, you know, targeting initially, it was a 13-foot distance between the property line and the wall.
Okay.
You know, that's got some...
Let me reunter and tractor, maintain it.
I don't think, I don't think we'd want to move it beyond 25 feet.
Sure. Oh, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Do we have any more comments for, or questions for staff?
Just one comment, if you could.
Sure, go ahead.
So just, I really am grateful that applicant and residences are working together. It's great to hear. So I think as we get to, and I sense that we're probably all ultimately going to be in favor of this. So as we approach that, I think what I would prefer we do, and love the feedback from many other commissioners, is not necessarily require by any kind of DR deviation, height changes, extension of walls, moving of, I would leave that to the developer to work, continue working with the neighbors to do that. And I think we just leave it as a typical DR case with the typical Town of Gilbert standards and let them work it out. I think we let them work that out. Yeah, yeah.
So maybe as part of their approval, we word it, we have something in there, word it the way you said it. So that way it kind of forces them to work out any, any issues.
Yeah, I'm trying not to put too many more stipulations because they seem to be working well together, but, but however you see fit.
But I think the way you word it, just that they continue to work together to figure something out, just keep it as broad and general as that. So that way it kind of, it still forces the developer to do it and not just walk away afterwards.
Is staff okay with that?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, as was discussed, there is a separate process called the separation, excuse me, separation fence modification, which we'll come back to you specifically on this, to the planning commission to approve. So I don't, and since the applicant has put on the record their desire to work with the residents and come up with a fence design and appropriate height, I think that will be adequate for them to then come back at a separate time to deal with the fence.
Okay, so then we could just leave the way the Commissioner Cavaney suggested. Okay.
Approve it the way it is, and it'll come back to us on that issue.
Okay, sounds good. All right. So if we don't have anything more for staff, I'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up. Is there any further discussion?
I was just going to state, that was my only concern that I had at the last meeting when we saw this, was the access to that irrigation structure and along that road that they have access on right now. So nine feet is probably not adequate if they're going to drive it. So whatever they can do to work with the community, that's great.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody you want to entertain a motion?
I'll do it. So Chairman, I move to approve the findings and facts and approve DR 19-29, Gilbert Gateway Commerce Center, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll give that second to Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. DR 1929 is approved. Next, we'll move along to item 18, ST 18-10, Layton Lakes Parcel Four. Nathan?
Thank you Chairman Anderson, Planning Commissioners. Layton Lakes Four, KB Homes Standard Plans. The reason you're viewing this as a public hearing item is you saw it at study session last fall, so it's been quite a while since you've seen it. And I wanted to bring it back before you to, just show you, or give you the opportunity to review it in your packet. Layton Lakes Parcel Four is the highlighted portion here at the northwest corner of Lindsay and Queen Creek. SFD parcel rezoned last year, 75 home lots, oversized in SFD. And so well documented, the rezoning there. And a few changes that they've made since you saw this last fall, there were six plans, three were two-story, three were one-story. Now they have four standard plans, all one-story, ranging from 1,500 to just over 2,000 square feet, as you can see here. That's the plat, of course, what you've seen. Again, the zoning allowed for oversized lots and all those things. And then a lot of the comments we had at the study session were based on architectural themes and so forth. The applicant's done a nice job of revising that in our estimation. But I did want to get your input and give you the opportunity to see that again. They have come a long way in terms of addressing some of those architectural themes, specific items that you might see on each, you know, Spanish, Tuscan ranch, and so forth. And I've outlined those kind of here in your, in the PowerPoint and in your staff report as well, some of those changes that they made that we're supportive of. This is the lot matrix of the various plans. And then with that, staff's recommending approval. Be happy to go through more slides in detail, but I wanted to try and be brief if you didn't have too many comments, and give you the opportunity to ask me any questions if you have.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions for Nathan? Commissioner Folick?
I just need to state that I do have a conflict with this item.
Yeah, there is some EPS plans in here. How about anybody else? What down here? Oh. All right, thank you Nathan. Is the applicant here, and do they wish to give a presentation?
They are here, but they do not, unless you have any questions.
We don't have any questions for the applicant, do we? Okay. I don't have any cards from the public, so I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Anybody want to make a motion? You're on a roll, Commissioner Cavaney, so why don't we go with you?
All right Chairman, I move to approve the findings and facts and approve ST 18-10, Layton Lakes Parcel Four, subject to conditions of the staff report.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you Nathan.
Thank you.
19 and 20, we can hear those at the same time, correct? Okay. So GP 1815 Cadiz and Z 18-29. Josh?
All right, thank you Chairman Anderson. Commission members, this is GP 1815, Z 1829 Cadiz. This is a proposed residential rezone and GP change located south of the southeast corner of Greenfield and Jermaine. You may recognize this area. You saw the Stratford piece in the, on the southwest corner, and then a couple months ago, I believe it was in December, to the north of the proposed site is the future Bellamy Residential. This subject site is approximately 10 acres. It's 9.99 acres. The applicant is requesting a general plan change from zero to one dwelling units an acre to 3.5 to five dwelling units an acre. Corresponding, they are asking for a rezone of the current single-family 43 zoning designation to single-family detached with a PAD. On screen, you just have a quick snapshot of their development plan. It's a little hard to read, so I'm just going to switch to the next one. This is a more accurate representation of what the applicant is proposing. This wasn't included in your packets. It's, this is just for reference only. This would come forth with the preliminary plat if and when this does get approved. As you can see on the, on the development plan, there are two different lot sizes that the applicant is proposing. One is a little over 2,600 square feet. The second larger of the two is 4,500 square feet. They have strategically chosen to place the smaller 2,600 square foot lots on the east or west side of the parcel with the larger lots on the west to buffer the single-family acre lot residential that is directly east of this proposed development. Just a quick run-through of the requested deviations from the applicant. They are looking to reduce the minimum lot area, increase the maximum lot coverage for each individual lot and the amount of, that the building will be able to take up on each lot. They are requesting to reduce the front setback, the front yard setback, which as you may recognize, they are, on the smaller lots, they are looking to implement what they call a bonus room. On the smaller lots and on the larger lots, a similar type of encroachment into the, in the front setback. They're also looking to degrease the rear yard setback and move the, what would traditionally be your backyard onto the side of the lot. Then they are also requesting to reduce the minimum distance between dwelling units. And then, per code for the patio, code requires it be covered. And due to the proximity of how close these proposed structures are to be, to be next to each other, how close they are, they don't feel that a covered patio is necessary. They still will be having a patio, just it won't be covered. And just to better explain what they're looking for with these deviations, what they're hoping to achieve, and the applicant is here, and they will be more than happy to go over the exact details of what they're looking for. On the left-hand side of your screen, you'll see the smaller, the smaller lot size with the proposed bonus room, as you can see here, which would be allowed on 50% of the lots. The other 50% would be an open courtyard. On the larger lots, it's not a bonus room, but they are looking to extend part of the structure into that front area to give a little character, I guess, to the front of the, the street front. The applicant, like I said, he is here to answer any questions that you may have on the actual development and, and what their vision is. So if you have any questions for them, they're more than happy to answer that. And of course, if you have any questions for me, more than happy to answer those as well.
Okay, let's start with you, Josh. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Josh? I have one quick question for you. So in the back of the staff report, there's, I think, about four letters of opposition from the neighborhood, and then there's one letter of support. I'm assuming you guys had to have a neighborhood meeting for this?
Correct.
How did that go?
Um...
Any people show up? Nobody showed up?
We had about four or five people, and I believe it's the same people that wrote in the letters, were the people that showed up at the neighborhood meeting.
Okay. And same complaints, which is, they don't want the density?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. If the applicant would like to come up and give a presentation?
I have a question for Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair.
Josh, as a planning commission, when this came to study session, we, there was a lot of feedback given, and there have been changes made. Is staff generally in support of this? Is that why it's coming forward now? And concerns have been resolved and all of that?
Staff is, yes. Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, staff is generally supportive of this. They are offering a significant amount of open space, 27% gross, a little over 27% gross, a little over 30% net landscape open space, which is, as you can see, it's directly on Greenfield. There is no wall. This is not a walled and subdivision. So they are attempting to make this as open as possible and conform to the intent of the Santan character area. So that is correct. Staff is generally supportive.
Okay. And you answered inadvertently, but answered one of, some of the concerns that I had is, we have this nice rectangular piece of property that has a lot of requested deviations for it, and to what benefit for the town. And it sounds like the benefit is the open space as required in this character area, to get it to be what it, what we want it to be.
Correct. And just... Correct, and just to note, Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, the town for the Santan character area, it's required ten percent, so they, the applicant has gone above and beyond what is normally accepted or required by the town.
Okay, thank you Josh.
All right, thank you. Anybody else, questions for Josh? If the applicant would like to come up? You can say your name, and you'll have ten minutes.
Chairman Anderson, and members of the commission, my name is Stephen Earl. I am a resident of Gilbert. I'd like to introduce you, for those who don't know him, Reed Porter, he's in the second row. He's been a resident of Gilbert for more than twenty years, president of Trend Homes, president of Ryland Homes, president of CalAtlantic Homes, built thousands of homes in the East Valley. He retired from those large corporate home builders, so that he and his wife could focus on what we call small infill parcels that kind of defy any use. And that's, that's what we have here. We have a general plan amendment and a rezoning case in order to fit this into this specific This first slide is the one that Josh showed you that shows our parcel of just under ten acres below the recently approved Lennar Bellamy Community. And then to the east is White Wing, to the west is the water treatment plant, and then the youth soccer complex. You can see that with the school to the south and Bellamy to the north, and the two single-family homes to the east, there really is no other way to expand this site, and so it is a small parcel. There was confusion, I think, at the first study session, now by the way, we've been working, working on this case for a year, but there was some confusion at the first study session that we were seeking all two-story, and that this was similar to the project you remember seeing at Ray and Valvista. This is dramatically different. Just by way of the character area, both the general plan and the character area call for diversity of housing to meet different income levels. They also call for creative innovative housing. And one of the challenges we've had from the very beginning, and it's really the reason for the deviations, is when we sat down with Kyle and Linda back then, it was pretty clear that the city didn't have a category for detached town or villa units. They don't fit squarely into a townhome project, they don't fit squarely into an SFD project, where SFD really normally means you have a backyard and limited side yards. This has a large side yard, limited backyard. And so we went through how the best way to, to zone this property, and really the only one we could find that we could legitimately use was SFD, but it did require a series of deviations. In the Santan character area, one of the things that we discussed early on was, is that when you have these kind of tiny infill parcels, like we have here, if you look at the quarter section of which this ten acres is apart, then the overall density is two point five. If you look at the larger section of which this is apart, the density is one point five five. The staff report also notes a number of large master planned communities in the Santan character area, such as Seville, Layton Lakes, Freeman Farms, Shamrock Estates, and Adora Trails, all of which have small lot development inside of them. And, and so it's not unusual to have small lot development in big master plans, the difference here is, we were left with a ten acre site. And just to answer the question about the neighborhood meeting, there were four people that came, they were, they were, the letters that you got, they were from people about a mile away, except for one of the neighbors adjacent. The primary concern that they raised to us at that time was, we need a paved street that ends in a cul-de-sac for our lot, because they've been using a dirt road for twenty years, and they don't have water, city water, they don't have city sewer, and they don't have even Cox cable. So we're providing all of that to them, and we worked out the dimension of that cul-de-sac so that they'd be able to get in and out of their lot safely, both cars and equipment. So when you look at the overall Santan character area, we actually do, are in compliance when you consider how the plan is laid out, and I just highlighted a few things here, you really heard it first from Josh, the plan has thirty-one percent net site and open space. It's, that's really unheard of. Nothing here tonight you've seen has this much open space. And, and how it's done is to move all the units back from Jermaine Road, the minimum distance before there's even an internal street is fifty-five feet. Now normally you might see ten or twenty feet of landscaping, so it's at least double and sometimes triple what would normally be there. But at both north end and south end, you get up to a hundred and eighty feet, that's two-thirds of a football field, before you reach the first house. And then in the open space area, which is the main entrance, so as you're coming in, you're seeing this open space feature, and that, that, the depth of that is more than a football field. So the impression as you drive up and down Greenfield is that this is a enclave, small enclave of beautiful homes in a, in a innovative, creative setting, that are way back off the road. We did, as you can see, we are building with Lennar, Superstition Drive back to provide access to the east, and we are inselling twenty-four inch box trees, the species determined by the adjacent neighbors outside of our development. So this benefits them that they'll be, have an entire tree-lined driveway there. This shows the entry feature, and the only walls that we have in that area are just low walls that would be for parking. This is the two-hundred series, this is, you have not seen this before. These are one-story buildings, there's a lot of articulation with them, now you can see that there is one, one-story model, but I just want to be able to point out that on the east side of this development, all of those homes are all one-story. We've committed to that, to staff, it's in the report, and, and so we wanted to make sure that no one, no neighbor had a two-story home next to them. This is the internal street system for that two-hundred series. What's important here is that unlike a lot of normal, single-family detached homes, where the backyard might be the predominant area, it's the side yard here, and so the side yards are sixteen feet in width, a significant area in which, and I'll show you some renderings of how we're, how we're building those today, but in that area you can have outdoor kitchens, barbecues, water features, hardscape, ornamental flowers, seating, shade, and as Josh said, because these buildings are essentially twenty, less than twenty feet apart, the only time of the day where this won't be, this area won't be shaded is high noon, because other than that, you have shade from either the structure itself or the next door neighbor. So this is what we call indoor-outdoor living, and I'll show how that functions very well from interior to exterior of the house. No private parking is allowed on the streets at all. You have over normal length driveways of twenty to twenty, in some cases even more, twenty-one or twenty-two feet, so visitors can park there. There's also a number of places throughout the subdivision where neighbors can park, or visitors can park along the edges. There's also significant trail systems along the north side, south side, and right up through the middle and on the west side. So that was another important character feature for the southeast character plan that we connect to trails. This is the, this shows where the two-story homes are located, in blue boxes. Now you can see that they're all pushed toward Jermaine, so that new project to the north, which does have two-story homes, the school to the south, and the two homes to the east are all protected by essentially one story. There could be a two-story model, and you, you saw in the rendering that there is one two-story model of the larger homes. And I also wanted to be able to point out that the portion of the house that is forward, the significance of having a portion of the house forward from the garage is you eliminate that garage dominance, which irritates all of us when we drive down the street and all we see are big garage doors, and the front door is somewhere back where you can hardly see it. In these, the house is forward. Another very important feature of these homes is that all the landscaping in the front yards are all installed by the developer and all maintained by the HOA. All of us have lived in subdivisions where the HOA maintains all of their portions very well, but your next door neighbor may not want to maintain his front yard, or may decide to put it all in gravel. That's eliminated here because all the landscaping is installed and maintained by the HOA throughout the project. That's important for people, empty nesters and millennials who want to have, live in a beautiful home, and these are expensive homes, they get up to more than thirty-six hundred square feet, but they want to have simple outdoor living, and I'll show you that in just a second, and then have extremely nice amenities.
Can I jump in here and ask you to come to a conclusion? It looks like your ten minutes has been up about a minute or two ago.
Okay, I'll, I'll do it right now. This is the one-hundred series I showed you, this is a rendering for the street, we know that we're going to come back for DR, this is how that functions, this is that indoor-outdoor living, they don't have sliding glass doors, they have sliding walls, so that your living room and your outdoor space function together. So we believe that in this case, we have met the principles of the Santan character area and the general plan, and it's a beautiful plan that people will want to live in and will fit well into this area, on this infill parcel. We agree with staff's stipulations.
Okay, thank you. I think somebody had a question for you, is Commissioner Cavaney, then we'll go to Commissioner Follak down.
Yeah, so, you know, I know that the applicant has done a great job in a couple of these other projects that we've reviewed and supported, but I got to tell you, I, I just, I don't see this one, I just don't. And we have SF forty-three to the south, SF forty-three to the east, we have this being proposed to change from SF forty-three to SFD with a ton of variances to, to the zoning requirements of the setbacks and so forth, so I just, I'm not seeing it. I, I, I do not think it's a good transition from existing zoning to, to this. I, I, I see, and I don't, I, I see how you could argue that it's an infill. I still don't quite see that, given the area, although I'm looking at the adjacent properties and believing that those may not ever change, or at least not for a while, but I still don't, I, I cannot get behind the densities. I, I know there's great product, I know this, this applicant does a great product, I am not arguing that, and they've been very, very kind and articulate in, in sharing the way they do things, and I, I do support that. But on this one, I, I just don't see it. Help me understand how we can justify that kind of, that kind of move from SF forty-three with adjacent properties still being SF forty-three, down to SFD with all of those requested variances.
Commissioner Cavaney, I understand your concern, when you look at the southeast or the Santan character area. That's why we spent a lot of time with staff, and I cited you to Seville, Layton Lakes, Freeman Farms, Shamrock Estates, and, and Adora Trails, all of which are in the Santan character area, and all have some type of small lot development inside them. The difference here is, is that it's out on Jermaine Road, but we didn't pick the location of this leftover parcel. It's, it's really hard to understand how the parcel could be used for anything legitimate with single-family, small lot development to the north of it, and a school to the south, and then you've got the treatment plan and the, and the soccer fields to the west. The two lots at the east, we addressed their concerns with the buffer, and the one lot, the single-story and the open space, and the series of trees all the way down, so that's why they're not here in opposition. We addressed their concerns, and we look at the general plan, and the principles are balance of housing types, create new and innovating housing opportunities for future town residents, accessible to a range of income levels, infill sites and growth areas where resources and infrastructure are already in place, and have adequate supply of a variety of homes. We looked at all those things, and then the principles of the Santan character area, and we felt that in this very unique situation, we believe this is unique, and when you have a parcel that's less than ten acres, it's very hard to think of any other use that would go here. And it would make such a great impression as you drive down the street and see this beautiful project set way back with lots of open space and character, so I, this may be one where we disagree, Chairman Cavaney.
And thank you, yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, I recognize you've been working on it for a while, as you explained. I, I, I wouldn't give up on this lot for other uses yet, though I think it's a, probably a pretty coveted lot though, being, having that street frontage that you have there, but, but yeah, okay, I appreciate your responses, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Follak?
I just had a few questions. Terms of the deviations, how are they compared to the project that we did approve recently by New Village? How does that compare? Are these, are these similar, or are we asking for more on this site?
They're very similar.
Are there any where we're asking for more of a deviation?
I don't believe so, no. It really has to do with the fact that SFD was not designed for a detached townhome, and there is not a district in the town that calls for detached townhomes. And these are unusual innovative villa units, and so there was a need for that, but we came back with three times the amount of open space and triple the amount of frontage open space along the street, so that there's a lot of amenities for all the residents, and we're maintaining all of the landscaping throughout the project.
Okay, and then the, the other question I had is on the, the road that you're constructing for that property, I believe that's on the, the north side of your property, is that correct?
Correct, it's, it's called Superstition Springs.
Okay, and.
Actually, Superstition Drive.
How wide is the, I'm assuming it's like a half-street that you're going to be doing?
Yeah, what's the width, overall width? Can't hear it. Well, we're matching what was approved on the north side in, in Bellamy, but it, it would be a normal local street.
Okay.
We're improving the south half, Bellamy's improving the north half.
But it will be a full street when, when the other.
Full street, sidewalks, landscaping, buffer, water lines, sewer lines, cable lines, all back to those two homes. So now they're living in the county, and they have no domestic water or sewer, they have a well, they have septic tanks, they don't have access to cable.
Now, now that road, it, it looks like it has access to the, to these residents as well as the existing residents, that's, that's correct?
Yes, it has access to the two residents who are immediately to our east, and it will be cul-de-sac there for them to use for their purposes.
But it also has access to this site, correct?
Yes, our, our, our property will be able to access it.
And, and the property owner to the east was okay with that, having shared access?
Yes, because it was a normal full street, and our, our primary access is off of Greenfield.
Okay, no, I think that helps me understand the project better. I personally like the product, I do feel like it is, this particular parcel is pretty landlocked, I do like the explanation of, that you, you have similar densities within larger communities in, in this character district. I would be for the project, I, I like what you've done with the, the offset from the road, there is a lot of open space, I think you did a really good job with that. I, I do like how you've brought the two stories closer to Jermaine, so I would be in favor of, of the. like how you've brought the two stories closer to Germaine, so I would be in favor of this.
Anybody else have any more questions for the applicant?
So I do have a question for you. You made a comment earlier that the way this is designed with the streets and the parking, that you're not going to, it doesn't allow for guest parking to be on these, I'm going to call them drives because they're only 26 feet wide. So help me understand how you're kind of controlling that a little bit more on site. So let's say I own lot 3043 and, I don't know, I'm throwing a Super Bowl party with a bunch of friends because the Patriots are back in the Super Bowl again. So how is the development going to kind of control that from people parking on those drives? I mean, those driveways are typically what you see for multifamily, not for a single-family development. So, you know, somebody could throw a big party at their house and that drive could get congested real quick if they choose not to park in the designated guest, I guess those are guest parking spots along the east. Can you, can you help me understand if there's any?
We have tried to provide a significant amount of guest parking in addition to the driveway in front of the home and these garages will be used for parking for the homeowners. So their guest spaces will be available in the front of their homes. But, but you, if you look at all of this area here around the open space feature, these are all guest spaces. These are all guest spaces. These are all guest spaces all the way along here. So there's a number of additional guest spaces throughout the project. We just felt that if you start putting cars on these streets, you can tell what happens when you get a lot of parked cars. They, it just junks up the neighborhood. So we wanted to make sure it's either in the driveway. And if you remember how we designed this, these homes, the house is forward, so the, for that driveway is really hidden. So what you see even when you drive down these streets, if there's no parked cars on the street, you see the house because the house is forward. And then there's a place for cars to park in front of the home and the residents park in their garage. But then knowing that not everyone would do that, we created a significant number of guest spaces all the way around the project.
Okay. So how did you guys determine the guest parking? So I'm assuming the design code, yeah, for a single family to provide a certain amount for that and then you just came up with a percentage of additional on top of that?
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, I don't have any cards from the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this case? Not seeing any. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Folik?
Sorry, I had one more question for the applicant, actually. Or it could be staff. How do we regulate the, bringing that up, how do we regulate the no parking? Are there signs to say no parking? How would that be regulated?
Yeah, there will be signs on all of these local streets saying no parking in street.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more for the applicant? Yeah, it's good. What about staff? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarification on the record, that this project is on Greenfield, it does not front on Germaine.
Okay, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. Is there any discussion up here? Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Cavani?
Just while we're deliberating. So again, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and I may be resoundly outvoted, but I, I don't think this is the right fit for this. I think there's plenty of opportunity for this parcel for something better in the future. So I'm going to go vote no.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, so I'm going to ask somebody to entertain a motion, please.
I recommend that we vote to approve.
Can I cut you off? Can I ask you to please go to the first page of the staff report and just read the recommendation from there, please? And this, we're voting on GP 1815 right now. If you could just read the sentence that's read there, please. So just move to recommend to town council, et cetera.
Recommend to town council approval of GP 18-15.
I need you to read the entire sentence.
Sorry. Request for minor general plan amendment to change the land use classification of approximately 9.99 acres, generally located south of the southeast corner of Greenfield and Germaine Roads, from residential zero to one dwelling unit acre to residential less than, or greater than three and a half to five dwelling units per acre.
Okay, motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Lee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Commissioner Cavani with a no. Motion carries. Next will be Z 18-29. Can I get a motion on that one? So all you need to do is read item B on the very top of page two.
Your recommended motion.
Do you want to do it, Vice Chair?
Sure. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 18-29 cadiz as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Folik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay with Commissioner Cavani. Motion carries. Move down to 23, Z 19-03, Land Development Code text amendment, high-density multifamily. Sidney.
Good evening, Commissioners. The request before you tonight is to make a recommendation to the town council regarding the proposed text amendment related to the creation of a new multifamily zoning district that coordinates with the existing general plan land use classification, I apologize, of residential 25 to 50 dwelling units an acre. To provide a little bit of history, this initially was discussed at the fall retreat by town council. This came up in regards to the discussion for removing the use permit that would allow multifamily ground floor in the regional commercial. A couple of other things were discussed, such as creating a high-density multifamily zoning district to coordinate with the general plan that is for, before you tonight and a mixed-use zoning district as well. You also saw this April 3, the first presentation that was presented to you where you initiated the text amendment and conducted a citizen review and we had some discussion. It was scheduled for the May 1 hearing, but it was continued to allow for some further staff research. To provide some context on what's currently existing in the land development code and general plan today regarding multifamily is the Gilbert general plan contains a land use designation of residential 25 to 50 dwelling units an acre. However, there is no corresponding multifamily zoning district that exists. The two currently existing multifamily zoning districts are multifamily low, which is eight to 14 dwelling units an acre, and multifamily medium, which is 14 to 25. As we saw tonight with AgriTopia, the epicenter, residential is loft above is permitted by right in certain commercial zoning districts. And there is technically no density limit on these loft above units, but we have not seen many of them in Gilbert. As I briefly discussed earlier, the primary goal of this proposed LDC text amendment is to provide a zoning designation to match our existing general plan land use designation. The new zoning district would allow for a higher density, more urban type of development within the town to provide a greater diversity of housing. The intent is to allow for intenser developments on a case-by-case basis where it is appropriate. Some ideal locations for denser developments would include enclosed proximity to commercial services and employment districts in order to support those types of uses. I am not going to go through all of the text changes, but I'm going to provide a quick overview of some of the highlights of it. I also do have the actual text in the back of the slides if we do want to go over. But again, as I discussed, the paramount is to create this new zoning district. The proposed standards, especially setbacks, are similar to the regional commercial zoning district, except that setbacks are further reduced when not adjacent to single-family. We are also proposing to add this obviously to the use table. All of the uses will align with the multifamily medium. They are directly copied from there and there is nothing that deviates from what is allowed or not allowed in multifamily medium. Moving on to amenities and some of those modifications, the required open space was reduced to 25 percent. The typical for multifamily medium and low is 40 percent. And also the common open space tree requirement was reduced to 20, I apologize, .25 trees per unit. The traditional is one tree per unit. Another item is a alternate activity amenity of 400 square feet may be allowed in lieu of a children's play area. And also indoor or rooftop pools and amenities can be counted towards the required open space amenities that are required per code. So this is just to allow for some more flexibility while we're still providing those amenities that we believe that our residents do need in Gilbert, but allowing some flexibility because as you get denser, you need to get a little bit more creative. Since you last saw this, we added some additional provisions from feedback that we received from you and then also feedback that we received from some multifamily developers and representatives. One of the items was a further reduction in setbacks if it is adjacent to multifamily or non-commercial and also a reduction in setbacks if the development is under 40 feet and adjacent to single-family residential. So 40 feet is the maximum height permitted in MFM, so that's where we got that number from, that it could follow the MFM setbacks adjacent to single-family residential. Also, the requirement of 60 square feet of private open space is proposed to be reduced or eliminated if an additional 10 percent minimum common open space is provided. This is to allow more group activity if in lieu of having the personal open space. Also, there are some modifications to their required swimming pool and enclosed community facility opposed to a strict number that we have per code right now. It's based off of the unit count, 10 square feet per unit for those, and they can also be divided into multiple areas within the development. Staff recommendation, we recommend that you, recommend approval to the town council of the proposed text amendment, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cavani?
Can you go back just one slide, Sidney? So there, okay, the bottom bullet, it talks about required swimming pool and enclosed community facility, 10 square foot per unit. Is that, is that each or is that combined or is it, I mean, in other words, we're requiring a swimming pool and requiring enclosed community space. Help me understand how that...
Yeah, so I just put that together just for the convenience of the slide.
Got it.
So they are separate provisions. We have the swimming pool provision here, so it is separate. So traditionally, 60 square feet is required and that will stay with, I apologize, 600 square feet. And that provision will stay the same for the MFL and MFM. And then traditionally, it is 1,000 square foot. Community facility is what is required there. So it is split up. It is separate. So they're different provisions and different counts. I just did that for the slide.
Okay, just trying to consolidate this slide. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question for you. So I know the town's going through their general plan amendment right now. Is this being incorporated into that? Are you looking at certain designations around the town that this could work in? Catherine's already reaching for the mic, so it looks like she's going to jump in on that one. Or is this something that you're just going to leave the way it is and if somebody wants this designation, they just have to go through the GP and rezone process to get this?
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. We, through the 2020 general plan update, we're not proposing any land use amendments that would change specific areas to the 25 to 50 dwelling unit per acre. We imagine that this is more something that would occur on a case-by-case basis as appropriate areas come online, maybe in vertical overlay areas, in growth areas, as Sidney described, near commercial or other non-residential where it's appropriate. So it would come, come to you and then on to council to make that decision.
Okay, so there's no plans that designate areas in general plan as kind of, as a right to do this?
No, it would need to go through an amendment process.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then how does this work with, I know we already looked at the parking code some time ago. Does this affect the parking code at all? Because we do currently have a hefty requirement for enclosed garages for these types of products. And then once you're getting into that high density, that's a lot of garages you need to get on, even if you work it into the main building itself.
Yes, Chairman Anderson. We, we know that the parking section, we need to look closer at those standards with this district. We haven't addressed it with this amendment, but the, we do have a council subcommittee that we're working with right now, looking through an entire refresh of the zoning code. So the parking section as a whole is, is a pretty detailed portion that will take a little more time to refine those standards, but we certainly appreciate any ideas that folks have going forward.
Okay, thank you. I'm done. Does anybody else have any more questions? No? All right. You're the applicant. Does anybody here from the public wish to speak on this? Nope. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it up for discussion. Commissioner Torgerson?
As I look at this, I'm seeing that there's less open space by far. The setbacks are reduced by far. We're looking at trying to maintain some sort of character in this town, supposedly. Why are we expanding that out? If anything, setbacks similar. I lived in something that would absolutely qualify for this back in, back in the 80s, near Brahman Chinese Theater. Not pretty. It's not nice. It's not, it becomes a parking nightmare. And aesthetically, that is exactly what this town has avoided for a very long time. We are encouraging a big gray block that's going to take 75 percent of the acreage there. Rather, we're encouraging a smaller green space, higher density, less space. It doesn't exactly sound like a quality of life that we're, that we're regularly. I'm just, I'm absolutely flabbergasted that there's no thought process into like, all right, let's bring this up. Let's move these things much tighter to the, let's make them denser. And there's not even necessity to do that. If we want to make, if we want density, build it up, leave that open space. So at least there's, of having something, it'll still probably be less per unit, but at least it would be, have the appearance of a quality of life. And I'm really vehemently opposed to it written.
I think the product that this is trying to attract, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's more the stuff that you're seeing that's built along Tempe Town Lake. And I think it's that type of little pockets within the town that I think we're trying to create. I agree. I don't think this is the type of product that would go into something that's strongly residential, like over at the Islands or something like that. But, you know, in a Santan with a mall areas, I could see a four or five-story kind of product working there or any other types of those, those types of pockets. So I think, I agree with you. I, I don't think it's, the way it's written would work for the more residential and urban, suburban areas, but for an urban area that we're trying to create a environment or a vibe, like what's happening along Tempe Town Lake, that all those four, five, six-story housing projects are being built. And I don't know if you toured any of them. I mean, they're really nice. I'm pretty familiar with Salt. And right now, most of the multifamily projects out there are infill projects and they're going into those 10 to, you know, 12-acre lots and they're going into commercial and regional, commercial and industrial pockets where they're allowed that verticality. And I support the text amendment. There's a couple of things in there I would change, but I don't, you know, just because they're just not, they're really challenging to design for in multifamily. But all in all, I think it's a good starting point. And I think as you get more cases in Gilbert that want to utilize this, this new category, that's going to be kind of the trial and error. See what works, what doesn't work, and then we just make code amendments along the way to just keep improving it.
Commissioner Cavani?
Great, great thought, too, Jim. I mean, I hear what you're saying. And I think the one thing that we've seen is, as we've watched products come into Gilbert is, there is a gradual... is there is a gradual growth for Gilbert to become more than just a farm-like community, but even have a bit of a city center kind of feel in some locations. And we wanted to do it right, and the way that we previously addressed it was through this mixed-use opportunity. And we ended up with places like the Santan Flats, and we almost had one at City Gate. And, and I think trying to mix it with that mixed-use piece just wasn't happening right. And so we had to step back and find a way to accommodate the developers' request to meet this very unique population. And you're right, it doesn't belong everywhere in Gilbert. It really belongs in certain locations, which will help, be able to help tailor as the projects come in, and we can say, this is a good place for MF high or not. But I think, I think we want to make sure we're preparing for the increased densification and perhaps some city center type opportunities as the developers are able to bring that, that class of product here. So I agree, it's not everywhere, and if it were tried to be done everywhere, we'd really fail. But I think we have an opportunity to carefully utilize this to meet a demand that is happening for this type of product, so, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, so I think we're at a point where we can entertain a motion. Does anybody want to take a stab at it?
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 19-03 as requested.
Motion to recommend approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cavani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay from Commissioner Torgerson. Motion carries. Last item, 24, Z 19-02, Land Development Code text amendment for GBC and GBC sign code. Stephanie?
Good evening, Commissioners and Commissioners. I'm Stephanie Boobenheim, the last one tonight. So this is an LDC text amendment to update the sign code in regards to the Gateway Village Center and the Gateway Business Center zoning district. So we brought this to you in March for a study session to initiate the citizen review and the text amendment. And just a quick recap, this is in the Gateway Character area, and I starred the two areas that are still zoned GVC or GBC, and I've highlighted those in red here. So right now, approximately, there's 61 gross acres of GVC, the Gateway Village Center, and about 38 of the Gateway Business Center. And you saw in study session that this area, there's a mouse. No mouse. This area up here on the northeast corner of William Childen Rucker was under a rezoning case tonight proposed for multifamily medium. So this update is really kind of, could be looked at as a maintenance, so it's updating the code because currently in the sign code there is no regulations for Gateway Village Center or Gateway Business Center, and that was left intentionally out in 2017 when the major update was done to the sign code. It was during then, there was a revisioning process, so the town just wanted to take a moment to leave it out to see what was going to happen with that area. And then once development did come in, which is where we're at the point now, so we are trying to enter that in, so that once the buildings come, we can go ahead and go through the sign process. So we are just going through and adding in through the sign regulation section where it's applicable. The only new addition is a gateway sign plan, and that really is just modeled after the heritage sign plan, so there's nothing too new other than the title and for that area. And I just highlighted each section within 4.4 that is going to be updated, and I added all of that into the back of the PowerPoint if you wanted to discuss any of those. And then we are also updating section 5.6, the designer view, so that we can make sure that that is able to be approved by the Designer View Board Planning Commission or also administratively approved for the gateway sign plan. And we just recommend approval, recommend you to recommend approval to the Town Council for this text amendment update.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cavani?
So Stephanie, what is the distinction of when something comes before DRB versus when something's administratively, is it just, is it scope, is it, what is it?
For comprehensive sign plans and heritage or gateway sign plan, if it's following the code section 4.4, they are able, we are, planning staff's able to approve it administratively. If it's deviating from the sign regulations, then it would come before Planning Commission.
Got it. Thank you.
Any more questions? Does anybody from the public want to talk on this case? Don't see anyone. Close the public hearing. Bring it up, back up for a discussion. Any discussion? Nope. Vice Chair, do you want to make a motion?
I moved, oh, excuse me. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 19-02 as requested.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cavani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next move along to administrative items, Planning Commission minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of May 1st, 2019. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve the meeting minutes of the May 19, or May 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cavani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Minutes are approved. Communications, report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events. I just have like a compliment to say, the link that you sent out, Catherine, of the map, that you can go to this map and see what's happening in the town, I think it's really cool. I think it was nicely done, you know, aesthetically. I haven't seen any other towns or cities doing this. I don't know if we're the first one doing it, but I think it was a really cool, cool link that we have and put out there to the public, so. That's all I have. Is anybody else on the commission everything? Nope. Report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson and Commissioners, and we very much appreciate that compliment because enhancing that public hearing map was our wildly important goal this year that the entire planning staff contributed to. And we were inspired by a map that we saw with the city of Santa Clara, and, but I think we took it even farther and made some great enhancements. And that map will continue to evolve over time, so we definitely very much appreciate your feedback.
That map looks like you guys invested a million dollars in putting that thing together.
It was all done at, using a template and staff resources.
Okay.
So, and the other thing I wanted to share tonight with you is that we're in the next phase of our public comment on the general plan where we're seeking some additional input from, from the public on some of the themes that we're planning to pursue. And so I just encourage people, the public, to visit our website and go to the 2020 general plan, and you'll see a link to get to that interactive website where they can take a survey and add some comments to the process. So that's all I have for you this evening. And, and you all got an opportunity to meet Ava, and we're very excited to have her here to join us as planning manager. And she said she didn't want to add anything else at this point. But, not tonight, but you'll...
Can I force her to add anything else?
Absolutely.
We'll expect a speech next month.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Catherine and Ava. Welcome, welcome to staff. If there's nothing more, we can adjourn. We adjourn.